I'd like to call the order, the Westmont Village Board Meeting of November the 7th, 2019 at 6 o'clock, and ask Clerk Simmsky for a roll, please.
Mayor Hunter?
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Parker is absent tonight. Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Attorney Zemanak?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone. It's kind of a fun and exciting meeting. We've got a lot of people to recognize tonight, but before we do that, open forum. Chief, anybody who wants to talk about anything that's not on the agenda, now's the time. If not, then we'll close open forum, and we're going to ask the community, our relations guy there standing by the door, to come on up about the 98th anniversary. Today's our birthday. The community's 98 years old. We're making plans for the 100th, which is New Year from January, and we've done a lot of stuff, and tonight we want to unveil our fourth mural.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Village Board, as Mayor mentioned, this is actually our 98th anniversary. It's actually November 10th, and a few years back, we started our five-year countdown. And when we did that, we basically unveiled a plan in which we're going to introduce a new historical mural every year. Each mural was going to depict a different era of Westmont's history, and our first assignment was to recruit a great artist to bring this to life. And at this time, I'd like to bring up Fannie Moy, and actually Mayor. I think the first thing we're going to do is unveil it immediately, and then Fannie's going to talk about the mural.
This is the fourth of five, right, Larry? You have one more.
This is the fourth.
So this particular mural will cover the 80s through present, but yeah, Fannie will talk about all that after we do the unveiling.
Nice. Very nice.
(applause)
Hi. This is, this is the fourth historical panel illustrating the highlights and developments from 1990 to the present. What stands out are the, on, in those years, are the numerous events throughout the year that Westmont holds, which draws enthusiastic crowds, brings together residents and a lot of visitors. Included here in this panel is the Memorial Day Barbecue Fest. I'm sure some of you guys have participated in that. Taste of Westmont, the very grand July 4th fireworks display up in the corner. Halloween Fest with costume contests for the family, and the pumpkin distance toss. And there's a very familiar face up there in the cherry picker. You'll have to look at, at it closely. And then also Holidays, which is the winter fest that is coming in December. Let's see. Two businesses that draw people from far and wide that I included in here is The Farm, which sells fresh produce and has seen the village of Westmont grow and change since it was first established. And Uncle Bubbs, which is always filled with hungry crowds and a caravan of barbecue trucks that they send out, bringing their smoky products to family events and other significant events in people's lives throughout the areas, many towns. There's also, Westmont has a great numerous amount of beloved neighborhood parks, and the two that are included here is the huge Ty Warner Park, which fulfills winter and summer activities, and the, then there's the Cool Fountain right by the train station, and Baller Eve Park where, where kids and adults can challenge their skateboarding skills. And that's just to name a few of the many parks. Westmont is also unique in many ways. It is the only location in the U.S., in the whole United States, to host the Olympic Luge Team Tryouts for more than twice. Currently, based on, because of the hospitality and the perfect hill that Westmont has, it is on its sixth year's search for talent. Another thing is that the fire department of Westmont earned the honor of an A-Class One top rating from the insurance services organization, which is really impressive. And Westmont has entered into a formal sister city relationship with Shin-Chu County in Taiwan, building ties between the communities in four areas, municipal, economic development, cultural, and educational relationships. The most wonderful thing about Westmont is something that is hard to capture on paper or canvas, and that is the feeling of community. Having lived here for 13 years and raising my family, my family and I have enjoyed all that Westmont has to offer: open green spaces, lots of parks, a wide variety of restaurants and businesses that reflect diverse people and cultures, living conveniences. It's been really wonderful. Celebrations and fun events, and a lot of access to many of the arts, like music with this, the orchestra, symphonic orchestra, visual arts, the investment in like, a mural like this, and dance, as in Salt Creek Ballet and other dance venues. But the most important is the feeling of welcoming acceptance and respect that the community extends to each other. Having met the many people who work hard to keep this town running, I know they are all deeply committed to meeting the ever-changing needs of all residents, making everybody here happy and proud that Westmont is their home. Now, next year, my fifth and final mural panel will illustrate the visions that the school kids of Westmont have in seeing what their future will look like. And Larry McIntyre will organize the collection of their ideas, and I will try to do justice and illustrate it properly to convey those ideas. So thank you, and as always, I am honored to be part of this project.
And that'll be added to the display at the library. So what was the first, each mural represents?
The first mural was actually representing pre-incorporation, which was 1921, and it probably illustrated over 100 years prior to our incorporation, all the way back to when Potawatomi Native Americans lived in the area. And then it went sort of by decade, so the second installment was 20s, 30s, 40s, and the third installment was 50s, 60s, 70s, and this one is 80s to present. And as Fannie mentioned, tomorrow we plan to announce via press release, sort of a contest or a challenge to the community to send forth their vision of the future of Westmont, looking up to the next 100 years. And then we'll put all that information together, and Fannie will depict it in the next mural.
Tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have 100th Anniversary Cake in the room next door, if anyone's interested.
Everybody's welcome, but don't leave yet.[576.48][576.48](laughter) Sit down, Jim. Moving on, the reports. I know we've got a lot of recognition to do, and I'll give mine quickly. Holidays is about ready to start. The Tree Decorating Day and the Lions Breakfast will be on Sunday, November 24th, Sunday before Thanksgiving. And then the Ugly Sweater 5K and Frosty and Friends Parade will be Saturday, November 30th, downtown Westmont. So if you haven't, Santa is brought in town. If you haven't seen the parade, it is fabulous. With our sister city, Shin-Chu, we started a walk to Shin-Chu, and right now, we've covered 3,650 miles this month. And the total we have were three times the total of what we needed, so we've been there and back three times. Our grand total right now is 27,845. So I don't know if they're still in the ocean or where they're at, but we'll have to find out where they're at as far as their end of it. I'll turn to Clerk Simmsky.
And I just have a couple of Public Information Committee meetings. Free leaf pickup in November. November 4th to the 29th, residents can put out an unlimited amount of rate leaves. Leaves must be in the kraft paper bags, no sticker needed, and regular yard waste will require a sticker, so this is just for leaves that it's free. Please visit our website for any details on that. And also, the Westmont Holidays Winter Ball. Please RSVP in November to attend the Westmont Holidays Winter Ball on December 13th at our Hilton Resort. Details and online reservations can be made at westmontchamber.com. So sign up, it's a good time, every year. Everybody come and join all of us.
Thank you. I'll turn over here to Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is December 19th, 4:30 p.m., right here at Village Hall. And then next, I just wanted to highlight, on October 28th, we had Octorber, which is a tree planting little event we had at Markers School District with the Ecology Club students. You can see some pictures here, also some more on the website as well. We just want to do a special thanks to the Possibility Place Nursery. They donated all the trees, and it was a real good event, so thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We had an Administration-Finance Committee meeting earlier, and what we talked about were amendments to policies for employment, policies in the village of Westmont. We talked about changes for the sexual harassment policy and the drug-free workplace policy. In addition to that, we talked about property tax levy. We talked about Halloween, whether afforded our kids an opportunity to trick-or-treat three times, not once, but three times. They got to trick-or-treat on the Trails Day on Saturday in downtown. They got to trick-or-treat on Halloween evening, and then they also got to trick-or-treat on Saturday after Halloween, so that was a big thing. We also talked about the possibility of doing composting by the curbside, and that will come up at a future date. In addition to that, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Holidays. With it starting on November the 30th, we're going to do the Ugly Sweater 5K. Frosty and Friends Parade will be Thursday, that Saturday night at 5 o'clock. The tree lighting ceremony will be at the end of the parade, and there'll be pictures with Santa and Westmont Center right after that, so make sure you come out for that. The Wicked Westfest scarecrow voting contest happened, and I'd like to call up Larry Forsberg to the podium, if you would.
Thank you, Trustee Little. We actually had a record year this year in terms of the number of votes, just under 18,000 votes for scarecrows. Just absolutely boggles your mind. But again, we transitioned from those beautiful hanging flowers in downtown to some fun scarecrows in keeping with the Wicked Westfest theme in October. So we do have some of the winners that are with us tonight, so we'd like to recognize Our first category is Dance Studios, and our winner is Dynamic Perception Dance Company. I believe we have the owner with us tonight, Jessica.[883.12][883.12](applause) You can see the scarecrow that they created there up on the screen. As you can see, it was very, very creative. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
One, two. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Our next category is a business category, and this goes to First Midwest Bank, and I'm not sure if we had someone from First Midwest Bank that could make it tonight. They must be still locking up the bank.
Counting the money.
Our next category is Health Services Care Business category, and that goes to Aspired Living of Westmont. So I know we have a representative there.[931.12][931.12](applause) Up on the, up on the screen, it's a Red Hat member that they did.
Lola.
Lola, thank you. Couple of their fans are here tonight with them.
Nice.
People are the creators.
Mm-hmm, exactly. Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done.[956.87][956.87](applause) Congratulations.[958.87][958.87](applause) Our next category is our children's category, and that was won by Active Childcare. Do we have someone from Active Childcare here with us tonight? I don't see them. Okay. They did a great job. You can see their scarecrow up on the screen also.
Very good, yeah.
From our family category, we have the Wild family that won this year. Is there anybody from the Wild family with us tonight? I guess we hit where we go. Congratulations.[1006.00][1006.00](applause) Turn that around, and so everybody can see it. Well done.
Yeah, very good.
Very creative.[1020.12][1020.12](applause) Thank you, everybody.
Larry, did you cut the cake for them?
We do look forward to doing anything this year. We greatly appreciate the help of the Westmont Historical Society and the support of the village to make this happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to my report, I'm going to work on Bruce's stuff. Westmont First is in charge of moving forward with the plans for our census for 2020 Complete Count Committee. It's our job to make sure that all residents understand that every person counted in Westmont. Helps to ensure that Westmont gets its fair share of representation, resources, and tax dollars from the federal government. Our next meeting will be November 18th at 6 o'clock in the public library. Please join us if you want to. A couple of us will also be attending a meeting at College of DuPage to help learn on how to reach and count the hard areas, so we'll be working on that. We had pumpkin smashing winners. I think we wanted to make a presentation.
Yes.
Mayor?
Oh.
So once again, we had our Pumpkin Smashing Extravaganza. The entire event is an effort to promote pumpkin composting, which we've been doing for about four or five years now here in Westmont, and Trustee Nero did a great job, but he did not win. I know he was upset about that, but the, but the winners are here tonight. And with us, our first winner is Liam Creighton.[1118.23][1118.23](applause) And Liam was representing Make-A-Wish Foundation, and he had the best splatter. So if you take a look at that picture, when the pumpkin hit the ground, that's what came out of it.
Oh, wow.
And so that's, that's one of the unique categories we have. Thank you, Liam.
All right.
Good job.[1141.33][1141.33](applause)
And our other winner in the ladies category is Annie Delino. I said it right. Took me three times, but, and, but Annie was representing the Westmont Library, and this is the second year in a row that the library has had a winner in this contest, so thank you very much.[1165.65][1165.65](applause) She also had the best all-time women's score, so congratulations. And then our third and final with the title of Pumpkin Smashing King is Zach Chorney.[1181.08][1181.08](applause)
Three times you practiced in New York.
Yeah. Zach is with Westmont Public Works, and if you take a look at the photo, you can see he hit right in the bull's eye. Trustee Nero did the same as well, but when, when Zach's hit it, exploded, and he, he won splatter points as well, so.[1203.58][1203.58](laughter) Trustee Nero is not getting an award.[1208.15][1208.15](applause) He is getting an award. It's an honorable mention.
Yeah.
He had texted me and told me he won, so I'm surprised.
Oh, yeah.
The next meeting of the Environmental Improvement Committee will be December the 2nd at 6 o'clock at the public library. We also want to let everyone know that the Holiday Lights Recycling, there'll be two drop-off locations starting November 2nd, or November 12th, I'm sorry, at the Johannick Fire Station and at the library, so we'll be doing that as well. The pumpkin composting and lightbulb recycling was a great event. We brought in... Manager May, do you remember how many pumpkins they told us?
265.
265?
1.56 tons.
Wow.
Awesome.
So we did a great job collecting pumpkins for that one. And then Richmond Gardens has honey, jars of honey for sale, as over 50 pounds were collected this year from the garden beehives. The jars are available at the Clarendon Hills Village Hall, where they're both three-ounce and eight-ounce jars on sale. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We've got a little, some more awards, and I'm going to turn over here to Trustee Addington.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First one is that community development. Our next meeting will be January 16th, and the other is just to kind of follow up on the Holiday Brunch, the Lions Club Breakfast, which turned out to be quite a spread. That will be at the Ronald Gunther Administration Building from 8 until noon on that Sunday, the 24th, and you can have a good and nice breakfast, then go right over to Community Center and see the craft show. So we're looking forward to that. And the other thing that we have this evening, which is something that Westmont Lions has now done the last six or seven years, is we have our peace poster winners. So I'm going to ask each of the winners to come up. I know two of them are here for sure, but let's bring up Aya. Did I say that right?
Ayla.
Elsner.[1348.15][1348.15](laughter) She is 12 years old, and she'll show you hers, and she's from Westmont Junior High, and her, her theme was, it says, "Bring a backpack full of kindness every place you go." The, the theme this year was Journey to Peace, and so it's kind of this, this, again, the overall theme is the journey, and hers was, "Fill your backpack with kindness." So why don't you tell a little more about how you came up with your poster? And introduce who's here with you.
Oh, okay. So hello, I'm Ayla, and my poster is basically about going on a journey of kindness. And if you look at the poster, it's kind of just a girl, and she has her backpack with her and her water bottle, and she's just kind of going on a journey with little cute little symbols with peace and kindness and happiness. And I really just kind of took the theme literally, like she has a map and a travel backpack and everything. And what inspired me to make this poster was just the theme, really, like Journey of Kindness and Peace, like, there she goes on her journey. So, yeah. And my mom, my sister, my dad are here right now with me. Hi.[1432.33][1432.33](laughter) Yeah.
Well done.
Yeah. Thank you.
Very well done. Great job.[1438.33][1438.33](applause)
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And when we're done here, we're going to go out and take some family pictures.
Take some pictures.
Yeah. Is Autumn Schurith here? Autumn? No. Autumn was the winner from Holy Trinity, also 12 years old, and Autumn's poster is the next one in line over there. If we can get that on the, that's the, yeah, the second one, Larry, if you want to.
Just switch the posters. Yeah.[1477.65][1477.65](laughter)
These, by the way, are all hand-done. The contest is for junior high. It's the 11, 12, and 13-year-olds, and as you see from Autumn, Autumn's picture is, of course, the peace sign, and the dove is breaking the chain of the shackle around the wrist, and then, of course, around the globe is all people of different color. So again, phenomenal job, tremendous artwork, and, you know, for 12-year-olds, this is amazing. And then our third one. Our third one, and I have some more stuff here for her, our third one is from Westview Hills Middle School, and it's, I know I'm going to butcher it, Yana? Did I say that right? Yana, and the last name is Kuzmanova?
Yes.
Well, how about that?[1542.41][1542.41](laughter) Anyhow, Yana is from Westview Hills Middle School. She is 13, and she said, "Why start peace tomorrow if we can start it now?" So go ahead, you're on.
So my amazing teacher at Westview Hills Middle School, my art teacher, after seeing various of my artworks, told me that I have an opportunity to enter a contest. And later that day, in my English class, we were learning about the Vietnam War and how it affected the Americans, and I realized that the only way that people in the world can live as one community is free peace, and wars do not bring any good because of its violence. And I have decided to draw the doves and the peace sign inside the world as a symbol of peace, since the theme is Journey of Peace, and the highways, the buildings around the world, and all of the flags and the footprints represent the journey aspect of the journey to peace.
If you could tell, in the globe, those are all footprints that she's got. And then the peace sign is actually highway with the O-line going down the middle. It's just very, very good. I have here, I think the others are, you already got yours, right?[1631.01][1631.01](laughter) Anyhow, for, each winner from each school gets from the Westmont Lions Club a check for $50. So here's the money.[1645.61][1645.61](laughter) (applause) Where these goes from here is, these three posters will go to the district cabinet meeting, and there's usually somewhere between, say, 10 to 15 from other clubs, and one will be chosen as the winner from the district. There'll be more money for that winner, and then it goes to the state, and there's 10 districts in the state of Illinois, and again, there'll be a winner there. After that, it goes to international headquarters. There are five, there are 50 winners internationally, out of about what they estimate to be somewhere about 13,000 to 15,000 posters that will be done. Just at our three schools, we had 28 posters that were presented to be looked at. So my thanks to the three art teachers, they've done a phenomenal job with their students. You mentioned Josh, who, some of you met Josh. Josh came to the meeting last year, Josh Vance from Westview Hills, and they've done a phenomenal job with these kids, and it's all done by them, so more power to them. The winner at the international level is $5,000 and a trip to the United Nations to meet with the General Assembly. So this contest is over three decades old. Like I said, we've done it now for the last six, seven years. We're going to continue, and again, to these wonderful young people, don't lose your talent. You're phenomenal, really.[1754.41][1754.41](applause)
Do you want me to get some pictures?
Do you want me to go up there?
Absolutely. I better do.
The winner at the international level is $5,000 and a trip to the United Nations to meet with the General Assembly. So, this contest is over three decades old. Like I said, we've done it now for the last six, seven years, we're going to continue. And again, to these wonderful young people, don't lose your talent, you're phenomenal, really. Do you want me to go up there?
Trustee Addington, do you have anything?
And that's it.
That's it.
Thank you so much.
Well, then we're going to go to trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be November 21st, 4:30 here in the Village Hall. Everyone is welcome to attend. The Police Department hosted a very successful drug take-back. The location was at the fire, at the Police Department, and then Mariano's was also a second location. To recap, there was 252 pounds of medication and over 150 drug disposal bags were distributed for free. That was held on October 26th, so I want to thank everyone for bringing in their unused prescriptions, and to the Police Department and Mariano's for hosting that event. Moving on to the Fire Department. The Fire Department hosted training on Cass Avenue Monday through Wednesday this week. Oak Brook, Downers Grove, Hinsdale, and Pleasant View were in attendance, so I want to thank them for that. And then, we have some exciting news. This week, NBC's Chicago Fire was prepping and filming at the police fire station this week. So, I want to welcome them to the Village of Westmont and say thank you for bringing that to our village. It is actually really, really nice, so.
And what's the name of the department?
Uh, it's, well, it's Chicago Fire.
But Springfield, isn't it?
No, not this time.
No, not this one. All right. It was Springfield last time.
Yeah, this, yeah, this, I don't know exactly what's going on with that, but it's a great opportunity for us to get our name out there.
That's good.
And it is, okay, it is still part of the Chicago Fire Department, but I want to thank everyone, EMA, Police, Fire for getting that all, and then Larry and Communications, because it's a great, it's great to have them here in the village with that, so, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had an exciting Economic Development Committee meeting yesterday. We were proposed a 40-unit luxury apartment unit on 63rd and Ridge. It was met with a positive recommendation from the Economic Development Committee, and hopefully that project will move forward. More news to come in the future. Our next meeting for the EDC will be Wednesday, December 4th, at 9:00 a.m. right here in the Village Hall. And then we also had a couple ribbon cuttings. We have two ribbon cuttings scheduled. The first is for Click Sports Bar and Grill on Friday, November 15th, and that's at 10:15 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. The second ribbon cutting is CrossFit Salire at Westmont located at 263, 263 West 61st Street in Westmont, and that will be on Friday, November 15th also, and that's from 11:00 to 11:30. So, you're going to have to run right over from Click to the, to the CrossFit to attend both. And then also, Dolce Vita Despah has recently opened at 220 North Cass Avenue, so please stop in and visit one of them, they're one of our newest businesses to open. Click is also open, that's just going to be their official ribbon cutting. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank the Public Works guys, Mike and his team, you know, the last couple of weeks have been pretty trying between windstorms, snow, salt, and all the things that they've had to deal with. I've seen the guys out in all kinds of conditions, so I know we really appreciate them, so pass that on. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Like I've always said, if someone comes in late for open forum, I'll open it back up. And we have an individual, Michael Lindsey Jr., who'd like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda.
Yes, I just saw that, that we have a sister city relationship with a city in Taiwan, as I can see. So, when we take that into perspective, I was just thinking, hmm, since we have a sort of economic relationship, why don't, I've seen in Naperville that they're, they have more than one sister city. So, seeing how that's the case, what really came to mind was we should start having relationships with more cities abroad. Comes to mind first would be a sister city relationship with a city in Japan, since we do have a good economic relationship with them, and they're a good trade partner all around, and there's a consulate in Chicago. And it should also be noted that with this relationship, I would really benefit Westmont. After all, we got nearly 12% population in Westmont that is Asian. I'm not sure what part of that would be Japanese, but, but at least within that percentage, we would have some Japanese. So, that would help get a good sister city relationship within Japan for Westmont, which would really benefit us, both culturally and economically, like with Taiwan. And, and we are, we're good friends with Japan, and we actually have an embassy in Washington, and actual diplomatic relationships making it easier. But even beyond Japan, it would also be good to have many sister city relationships, like Naperville has. They have more than one city, sister city after all.
Mm-hmm.
And that'll all, I'll be safe.
Well, thank you. And I'll have Jenny sitting there, maybe she can get your information, I'll have Larry or Jenny contact you. Shinju was our first and only sister city, and that came about because their National Cultural Center is in Westmont. So, that relationship built on that, so I don't think anybody said we don't, we wouldn't look at another sister city, so, but staff will talk to you, thank you. Moving on. Items to remove from the consent agenda, and I have one item, I'd like to remove the proclamation that's on there, and it's officially Dementia Friendly Awareness Day. Does any other trustee have anything else? If not, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
This evening on the consent agenda, first we have Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held October 24th, 2019. This is followed by finance ordinance number 13 in the amount of $1,645,969.91. We have several purchase orders. First one, AECom Technical Services, $990,700. This is the purchase order accompanying the construction engineering contract awarded for the public works facility. Next purchase order is Cargill Incorporated, $22,764.80. Represents annual usage of road salt. Next is Visu Sewer of Illinois, $22,800. They do sewer jetting, both sewer jetting, televising, and root cutting and services, you know, internal to sewer maintenance. Next is West Central Municipal Conference, $27,525. Represents the Spring 2020 Tree Planting Program. And next purchase order is also West Central Municipal Conference for $33,861, and that's the Fall 2019 portion of that same program. Next is Tyler Technologies, $95,140, is the ERP Software Maintenance, December 2019 through December 2020. And the total of purchase orders is $1,192,790.80. Brings the total of purchase orders and finance ordinance to $2,838,760.71. With the removal of the proclamation, that concludes the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve as read.
So, moved Addington, second, Nero.
Motion made, second, on the question. Seeing on roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero. Yes. Motion passes. We'll move on to the proclamation. I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Proclamation is for Dementia Friendly Awareness Day. Whereas November is National Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and whereas Alzheimer's Disease and related dementia are degenerative brain disorders that most often occur in people over the age of 65, but can strike adults at any age. And whereas there are over 210,000 residents in Illinois with Alzheimer's Disease or other dementia, and that for every person living with Alzheimer's Disease or other dementia, 10 to 12 people are additionally affected. And whereas the Westmont Dementia Friendly Advisory Committee encourages the village, residents, businesses, and services of Westmont to break the stigma and fear of exclusion attached to Alzheimer's Disease and other dementia. And whereas through education and awareness, Westmont Dementia Friendly Advisory Committee hopes to build their community into a dementia-friendly community that supports those living with dementia and their families to maintain an active role in our community. Therefore, Ronald J. Gunther, Mayor of Village of Westmont, does hereby proclaim November 7th, 2019, as Dementia Friendly Awareness Day in Westmont, calls upon all citizens to build toward becoming dementia-free community, excuse me.
I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Little. Second, Guzzo.
Roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. We do have representatives here, and they'd like to comment on this, and then we'll present you the proclamation.
We just want to thank you for, for putting this forward, and we're really looking forward, we have our committee formed, and looking forward to starting work on this within Westmont.
One of the things that, just so that you know, so today, we've had three educational programs at the library. I met with the library today, and we have scheduled 10 educational programs for next year. Next, November 7th, which is a Saturday, the library will host a dementia-friendly resource group. We've scheduled training for the Police Department, we're working on that with the Fire Department, so we're very excited for your support, and we look forward to continuing to grow and make Westmont a more dementia-friendly community. Thank you so much.
Did you mention what organizations you're from?
I'm from Aspired Living of Westmont.
And I'm from the Rush Alzheimer's Disease Center.
Thanks again.
I believe our President Lyons Stella has contacted you.
Yes, I've talked to Stella, I know we're going to touch base after the first of the year to get on your books to come and do a presentation, so, wonderful.
Again, some of us had an opportunity to, the kickoff meeting, and there's a lot of good information that they want to put out there, so, thank you. And I'll present you the... Before we move on to new business, I do want to acknowledge we have a Boy Scout in the audience. Would you come up to the microphone and tell us why you're here? Your name and why, the reason you're here tonight.
My name is Jo Stock, and I'm here because I have to meet a public official to get a badge for Boy Scouts.
Welcome. Any questions so far from the beginning of the meeting?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Got to meet eight.
Moving on to new business, A, Proposed Aggregate Tax Levy. Board to consider motion determining the proposed aggregate tax levy. Director Parker.
This was discussed in a lot more detail at the earlier Administration Finance Committee meeting, but for the benefit of the public, I'll just give a brief summary. This is the first step in the property tax levy process for this year. This is where we say, here's the intent, not issue any higher property tax than this amount. This comes to about 4.99% increase. Because of the amount, we do not have to publish in the paper, we're not required to, but the village has historically published a smaller notice in the paper to inform residents of the public hearing, which we anticipate holding on December 5th.
And I think the average we've been is, the last several years, is three, three and a half, or less.
Probably a little less than that.
Yeah. And if you don't get the new growth, you lose it, so that's why it's important to at least aim high. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made, and second to approve. Any comments? Anybody in the audience seeing on roll call? Trustee, trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, B, AT&amp;T Mobility Master Pole Attachment Agreement for Small Cells. Board to consider ordinance approving a master pole agreement with AT&amp;T Mobility New Singular Wireless PCS LLC to install, maintain, and operate small wireless facilities in and upon certain of Westmont utility poles, wireless support structures in on, and/or real property. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. ATT Mobility is asking for an agreement with the Village of Westmont to install small cell towers and village-owned utility poles and/or property throughout the village boundaries. Staff will review each permit, request location upon receipt. Once the permit has been reviewed, staff will approve or disapprove each request on a case-by-case basis. Staff has read the agreement. John Zemanek, our attorney, has also looked at the agreement. We both feel that the agreement is fine.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve, Addington. Second, Nero.
Motion made, second, on the question.
And just to summarize, the state passed an act that regulates small cell technology. The village last year passed an ordinance regulating small cell deployments, regulating the height and other features of these antennas. And this master pole agreement means that AT&amp;T doesn't have to come before the Village Board for approval of each separate small antenna that they put up, it can be done administratively by staff. This agreement follows the IML model, or agreement that they, they published pretty much to a T.
Need additional tenants? Seeing on roll call. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, C, Hudson Energy, a contract extension. Board to consider ordinance extending the term of a contract with Hudson Energy for natural gas supply to village-owned properties. Director Parker.
About a year ago, the village started a contract term with Hudson Energy to provide natural gas to the village. There were a couple of issues kind of with the first piece of it, and so with that, the village felt that we didn't really have enough time to get a good understanding of exactly how the service would work and what it would be like with Hudson Energy. If we'd taken no action, then our contract would have extended for another year. The village felt, village staff felt that it would make a lot of sense to extend the contract a little bit longer to get a good feel for the service, and also to have it end at the end of our fiscal year, which would give us an opportunity to consider that as part of our budget process.
I have a motion to approve.
To move, Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made, second. Comments? Seeing on roll call, please. Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, D, Code Amendments, Service of Citations. Board to consider ordinance approving an amendment to Chapter 1, Article 2, Section 1-105 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances Regarding Service of Citation. Attorney Zemanek.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a straightforward amendment for the village administrative adjudication process. The village serves citations to violators. They can do so by state statute in one of three ways: personal service, service by regular or first-class U.S. mail, or posting the property. Staff realize that the local Westmont ordinance provided for service by certified mail instead of first-class U.S. mail. First-class U.S. mail is a process that the village has employed consistent with state statute, so we're just looking to make that ministerial correction to allow for first-class U.S. mail service.
Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Barry.
Motion made, second. Comments? Seeing on roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, E, Declaration of Village Property as Surplus. Board to consider ordinance declaring certain village-owned vehicles and equipment as surplus property to be sold at the open enough... at the Obenoff Auctions. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Property identified in this attachment has outlived its useful life. They are outdated, non-functioning, replaced, or otherwise not economically maintainable anymore. Upon being declared surplus and sold, will be removed the village property inventory. We, on the list is two fleet vehicles, six trailers, which will be disposed of by auction through Obenoff Auction Services on behalf of DuPage Mayors and Managers. Staff recommends the approval of this declaration of listed vehicles and equipment as surplus and the method of disposal.
Motion.
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Seeing on roll call, please. You had a comment?
I did just want to note that I was, we found out just yesterday, I believe, that we have another vendor who's getting a piece of equipment for us that may be able to take one and to trade in value higher than what's historically been sold on Obenoff Auction. So, we may be connecting with them in lieu of Obenoff Auction on one specific piece of equipment, potentially.
And the ordinance gives the village manager discretion to dispose of the property in another manner. So, kind of had that covered.
And we've done that in the past with certain other municipal forms of government in town. Any other comment?
Approximately, what value do we receive from the Obenoff?
So, I believe with the inloader, they've seen historically around $12,000 to $13,000 for that one particular piece of equipment. And initial conversations with the dealer indicate we may be able to get a trade-in value of closer to what? $14,000, $15,000?
It's even trade for the.
What's a new one?
Uh, the new piece of equipment is the, oh, forgot now. It's either the snowbox, or it's the, there's two pieces of equipment we're trying to get. And one of them is an even trade with the inloader. It's either the snowbox, or it's the, forgot now. Can't remember. I'll let you know, though.
So, Mike knows, I, I watch these, and I have friends who watch these. But historic, or lately, we've been getting really good values, like kind of over what they really are valued at for the, for the, you know, Blue Book, or whatever it would be equivalent, so.
Been doing this for several years, you know, through this method. Prior to that, there was live auctions at some campus somewhere in DuPage County where we would run all the equipment out there. And the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference ran the auction. Immediately, when we switched to Obenoff, the far-reaching effect that that has, plus we don't have to wait for, you know, the annual event to happen either. You know, we can do it as they come up. And we've had nothing but success, surprising the, you know, the mechanic and the, you know, fleet manager as far as the value that we're getting from this auction. So, very successful.
With this auction house, it's not just Illinois. It's multi-state. I mean, we've got people from Wisconsin, Indiana. Minnesota once came down to look at some of our equipment. So, I mean, it gives, it just opens it up to a lot more, you know, opportunities for us to sell this equipment.
And I agree with trustee Barry. I think we're seeing very good prices for this equipment.
I agree.
And then the other thing is, you know, we've had problems with that in the past, previous administration. This is handled exclusively through DuPage Mayors and Managers and the auction house. So, the village isn't having anyone personally involved with selling the equipment.
And again, we set the minimum bid, and then they auction, they're off?
Right.
Are they using the Internet for that, too?
Yep.
So, any one of us can get on there and look. And then, at the very last, the, the prices go up a lot. At the very end, you'll see that, you know, that.
It's like eBay.
Exactly, eBay. Exactly, yep.
Any other comments? Anybody in the audience? No, seeing none, I ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything?
Just one quick question to our illustrious manager. With this early weather that we've been hit with, and I noticed we have a thing on here for salt. Where are we at for this year anticipation of a much colder-than-normal winter they're predicting? I don't know what they're predicting as far as moisture.
Yeah, and, and, and these are predictions, too. But we plan accordingly. In fact, when we put in our salt orders, with the one with the, the central management services of the state of Illinois, it's like back in June or July that you're guessing